Okay, good evening, everyone. We are on the record. This is a caucus of the Jersey City Municipal Council. Today is Monday, 7th of March. We had a scheduled 5:30 PM start. My phone tells me the time is 5:37 PM. I've silenced my phone. I hope you all do the same. Councilperson Gudziewski is here. Councilperson Ramchall is here. Fagiano, Yun, Osborne. Councilperson Coleman. Councilperson Rivera. I should just look down at table and say we had a full house. Councilperson Waterman is here and we have council president. All present at 5:37. Take it away, council president.
Okay, good evening, everyone. See if we can move through this efficiently tonight. Start with Express Scripts.
Yeah, we're gonna start with Swati.
I'm sorry. Not that efficiently. We'll start with Swati.
Rastogi.
Rastogi. Is she here? Oh, there she is. So Swati Rastogi has the new artwork in here. And she's here to just share a few words about what you're seeing here tonight.
Hello. Is it fine?
It's okay.
Okay. Yeah, I'm a local artist based in Jersey City. This is my first time exhibiting in City Hall and it's a privilege to me. After being a participant in Jersey City Art and Studio Tour, and which gave me a lot of exposure and interaction with my fellow artists here. I have a formal education in Fine Arts and Masters in History of Art. During the course of my study, I got an opportunity to live with the tribes in India, certain tribes in India, the central part of India. So that has encouraged me a lot to work more with the works inspired by the way they do. They are not fortunate enough to have the methods and materials that we have today in the contemporary world. So this side of my work are inspired and motivated highly from the folk and tribal cultures of India. So starting from several states of India, the left one is from Santal tribe, that is from Orissa state. Then the second one is from Wurli tribe, which is in the state of Maharashtra. Then the center three pieces, we see this is Patichitra style of art, which is traditionally done on cloth. But I have been inspired to see the paintings on the cloth, and I have done it on wood strips. It is all acrylic. And the three paintings here is also Wurli tribe, which is from the Maharashtr state of India. They use, the tribal art is very simple, very geometric, and they use very immature style of work. So here, but since I have a formal training in Fine Arts, painting, my work is more perfection and, you know, more color scheme, very coordinated. The other side, I have a series of abstract faces that I have just driven from my own self. And yeah, that's all about my work. And I'm open for any critical appreciation if ever anybody comes across my work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Swati. Okay, we'll bring up Express Scripts.
Okay, we have Eric Rubenacher and Ken Roskowski returning from ESI to discuss some of the concerns the council had expressed to them last time they were here. You know, they've gone back to their offices, done a lot of research about customer service and, you know, discussed with you some of their findings and obviously listen to any more concerns. Express Scripts, yes.
You just rob these one. Can Joma take it away?
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for seeing us again tonight. And it's good to see all of you. And since our last time that we were here in the middle of January, we took your feedback specifically regarding the hold times that members had been experiencing. So we went to our service delivery team. We pulled six months' worth of phone calls and for hold times. And as you see here on page two, we broke out the population of Jersey City lives between the actives and the retirees under 65, as well as the over 65 retirees. For the period of August to January, there was a total of 2,800 calls, 2,890. And you can see the different hold times that members experienced during that six-month period out of those 2,800 approximate calls. And I want to explain what a hold time consists of. So that act is when the customer service representative from Express Scripts actively pushes that hold button. And, you know, when they talk and put the person back on hold, so that's a total accumulated time. If the member puts Express Scripts on hold, that does not, that is not reflected here. There's no way for us to measure that. So of the 2,800 calls, there were 17 calls that lasted longer than 15 minutes. I did want to speak to the 634 calls. That seems like a very high number, but, you know, that, this is a complex benefit. Express Scripts wants to provide a quality call and a quality experience to the member. And our goal at Express Scripts is not only to provide quality, but it's what we call first call resolution. We want that member to hang up satisfied and have their question answered. So we prefer to put the member on hold, research the benefit, research the question, and bring back a valid answer. And so of the 17 calls that took longer in hold time, longer than the 15 minutes, you can see on the left here, there's the example of the reasons of some of the, we went back and looked at these 17 calls that were longer than, that had more than 15 minutes of hold time, as well as the four calls below. So for the total of the 21 calls, we went back and we listened to all 21 calls. And these are the various reasons on the left side of the page of why those calls took the extended hold times and the extended duration of the call. And so, and when I talk about multiple member accounts, so when a member calls and talks about their prescription benefit and says, oh, by the way, while I have you on the phone, let me ask about my son's benefit, and he's on a maintenance med. So there's more than one member being addressed on a single call. So that could add to the call duration as well as the hold time while the customer service representative does research. Okay? And then there are some other, as far as RX status, that could be the member has sent a prescription, or the prescriber has sent a prescription into Express Scripts and the member believes, you know, it should be in the mail to them. However, there was a question on the prescription and either Express Scripts is working with the prescriber or the member to validate the prescription status. So that would add to the hold time as while the customer service representative researches the prescription in question. Okay, so what we wanted to do was also to provide an action plan, which we have on page three. So we looked at the customer service representatives that are available to Jersey City. And we, as of 3-1, implemented a plan to add additional customer service representatives across our entire customer service population so that there's an additional, we have, we call Medicare Centers of Excellence because these customer service representatives are specifically and specially trained in the Medicare benefit, which is, as we're all aware, a much more complex benefit than a standard commercial benefit. So we've added one additional site in Florida where the members of Jersey City will now have additional representatives available to answer their questions, as well as on the commercial side. Okay? And as far as the hold times go, we are going to continue to monitor over the next six months. So I do want to address that the statistics and the data that we just covered on the previous page, you know, are within our norms. So that did not raise any red flags on the Express Script side. But based on your feedback, we are going to implement the additional quality reviews, the additional ops analytics, so ongoing reporting and review the service delivery and the analytics associated with service delivery over the next six months. And what we'll do is we'll have a quarterly review with Bob and his team to review the statistics and the data that's coming in based on our six months of analysis. And we'll have that review quarterly. And, you know, Bob can then review the results. And if there's any feedback or any changes we need to make, we will make it with the benefits team of Michaeline and Bob's team. Yes, sir.
You say you opened up a new office in Florida?
Correct.
Why not Jersey City?
This is a national office that handles our clients across, it's not a new office. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to say a new office. We opened, we have call centers all over the country. And we added additional, one call center to take calls for the Jersey City retirees. It's not a new call center. We're talking call centers that, you know, with 300 customer service representatives that pick up phones. And it's a pre-existing one that we opened up so that Jersey City members would have those additional representatives available to them.
Other questions?
Well, Aflac and all those people who want our business and stuff, they come into the, in City Hall and have, you know, a sit-down like maybe every six months or something like that. And to go over their benefits and how to sign up and all that kind of stuff. Is it possible that you come and show employees how to register and sign up for this Express Script before they need a prescription there? In other words, let me, you go to the doctor already, your medication is being sent to a pharmacist. Is it possible for you to show them how to switch that over to Express Script?
When employees hired, they fill out paper with enrolling in the prescription plan.
I think what she's asking for is just some sort of regular interval information session. Where like how we do for the other providers, where they would come make themselves available in council chambers, and any employees that wanted to interface with them could come and bring concerns or ask questions or get information about the benefit, something like that.
And show people how to do it. Because it's a little, to me, you know, it's a little, I need some guidance rather than, I work two jobs, I can't be on the phone for, I must have been one of those, that 45 minute, that 40-minute call, you know what I'm saying? You said you only had one, but I must have been that one. Do you know what I mean? And I hung up without getting any results because it was, first you get a person, then you wait, then you get a representative who's gonna help you, and then you're explaining and then you're getting your prescriptions and then, you know, do you understand? In other words, could you do that in City Hall? In other words, in the chamber, maybe have 20 employees who are just now switching over from the pharmacist to Express Script and talk them through, how do you do that?
Pharmacist is, you know, Express Scripts is, you know, works with the pharmacy. So I think your question's more about the mail order component of it, it sounds like.
Yes, that's what I'm saying. Express Scripts doesn't work with Metropolitan, I'm giving you a real example, with Metropolitan Health Center on Garfield Avenue where I get my prescriptions filled. So how do I stop getting my prescriptions filled there and get them filled by Express Script instead? Do you understand what I'm saying?
So if it's a maintenance drug, what I think happens, now correct me if I'm wrong, you'll get the first prescription from Metropolitan and then Express Scripts will probably send a letter to your house saying that this is a maintenance drug that the...
Still getting my prescriptions from Metropolitan. In other words, that didn't happen and I tried to call and register myself so that my doctor would know where to send my prescriptions in order for me to get them. So I must be missing a link. Do you understand what I'm saying?
So when problems like that happen, you can let the health benefits office know, or we actually have a representative from AccurSure here. You know, they have a call center as well for the employees. And AccurSure will reach out to Express Scripts on your behalf to help you get enrolled.
Correct. Yeah. I don't know if you have an annual benefit fair where the medical vendors come in. And if you do an annual medical or benefit fair, you know, we'd be happy to participate if it's a, you know, we do, a lot of our clients have annual benefit fairs.
Now, without going through the 40-minute wait, like I said, I must have been that one. See that one right there that says 30 to 45 minutes?
Okay.
Who do I call now?
Sarah's gonna work with you.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
Other questions? So I'll make my comments, which is, so these, the information or the data that you're presenting, you're gonna be reviewing this periodically, correct?
Correct.
So my concern is that I don't think this necessarily provide, these data points provide the information that's necessary to change the quality of service, I guess, or to improve the quality of service, right? So what I'm curious is, you're saying some of these reasons why they might be on holds, prescription status differs from member expectations. Do you, do you know how many of these calls are, status differs from member expectations? Prescription status differs from the member expectation. So that's like saying they have some expectation that they're gonna get something fulfilled and maybe it didn't come through yet.
Correct.
Would that fall in that category?
That would definitely fall in that category.
And then they're saying, where's my prescription, basically? Has it, has it arrived yet? So how many of these calls are those, fall into that category?
Oh, I could follow up. We were just giving examples of the, of the 21 calls that lasted longer than 15 minutes. These are an example of, I don't have the exact breakdown of how many for each of the bullets for each of the 21, but we can get that.
The length of call can certainly is one measure, but that difference of expectations versus what they, what their prescription status is, and I don't know if you do any measures on actual satisfaction, whether they resolved their expectations versus the status.
Right.
In, whether it was resolved to their satisfaction or not to their satisfaction, I'd be more interested in seeing something like that because I'm willing to bet that some of the those numbers are a little bit high, I'll be honest with you, on whether or not they're...
Except we could share with Bob and he can bring back to the council, or however you see fit.
And then to the councilwoman's point, the benefits setup and the reasons for being held up there, being placed on hold over there, wherever those calls may fall, whether they're on hold or not, seeing how those sort of situations are resolved and if they're resolved to member satisfaction, that they, I don't know if you do something at the end of it where they do some kind of survey or something that says, did they, were you satisfied with their...
Right. Did we resolve your question? Exactly.
Any other questions? Councilman Rivera.
How much, how much are we saving here? In terms of what's the price on Express Scripts versus our norm? Because I have a concern with...
Well, all our prescriptions are through Express Scripts. So let's start right there. Okay? So, and we just, you know, completed a procurement process at the end of last year. And I think there were three that bid on it. And Express Scripts was the most cost-effective or cost-efficient or cheapest for the city, you know, out of the three. And that's why the recommendation came to the council for Express Scripts again. I think the other question maybe is, how cheap is the mail order? You know, their discounts on the mail order significantly saves the city, we're talking about millions of dollars per year by using mail order as opposed to getting stuff filled through the prescription forms.
It's only for, it's only for maintenance drugs.
Only for things that you get every single month. Like, your regular, like, do you just go and you need an immediate prescription? They give it to you. It's just for, like, your refills.
That's my concern. My concern is if the doctor gives you a maintenance med to start off, start you off, and then Express picks up on the maintenance. Is Express gonna give you a generic brand all the time? Or are you gonna get the brand that the doctor gives you? Do you guys automatically switch from, from a regular, you know, from the prescribed medication to a generic brand all the time? Because that's a...
Not automatically. It requires the doctor to approve it.
So if the doctor doesn't check off medic brand necessary, you will give them the brand necessary?
Correct. If the doctor signifies that we cannot substitute, we will not substitute. And if we, and if there is a cheaper alternative and equivalent available, we will call the doctor to approve the substitution. Which is, which is what Jersey City, you know, is in contract for us to do. You know, if there's a, if a doctor prescribes a brand, we do that on your behalf because if there's a generic alternative, which is a one-for-one switch, it may be, it may be a different color, it may be a different shape, but it's the same exact alternative, we will call the doctor and say, you know, this 500, we won't, we won't go into the financials but say, there's a generic alternative, we would like to ship your patient. And the doctor will either approve it or deny it.
And that's sometimes seamless. So when you're talking about, first, let's just say you're gonna fill Lipitor, right? Your doctor gives you a prescription for Lipitor, right? Now you go get to fill that at the mail pharmacy at Tarek's Point. We actually will then call the doctor and sometimes, and then the doctor, in most cases, would actually approve the Atorastatin because it's a generic equivalent. So it's actually seamless. So the members haven't aware of it. So then you go to pick it up and it's actually the generic there. We're actually, we won't change your brand drug unless, you know, we talk to your doctor in that case. Because you don't have the program put in place where it actually says, dispensed as written. If you had that program in place, then yeah, we'd actually be able to automatically do that and you actually could be a penalty for that. But Jersey does not have that program put in place.
So if the doc writes medication for statin, Lipitor, and you guys don't give Lipitor, you write it for the generic statin brand, you guys would just give any statin or just the statin?
Whatever your doctor, whatever your doctor writes on the script, we can't...
It has to be, it has to be exactly the same.
Yes, that's correct.
It doesn't actually like that because...
It does, it does.
It's a great point, Councilman Rivera, because I was in your car when I had a course in my prescriptions. And the doctor said to me that this is what your insurance paid for. That's it. Plain and simple. So I had to take what I get and that's it. I couldn't get the right medication. I had to take the generic. Did it work? No.
It's supposed to be same.
It's the same as Kim and Lee's same.
It's supposed to be.
But let me ask you this one. Over the six months, we have almost 3,000 calls from the city employee. Then over the six months around, we have like 500 calls per month. You understand? Yeah. From the 500 calls per month from the city employee. That's the case. Instead you increase just another call center in Florida there, if you put your, like, onsite service at the City Hall, I think it's make it better for us? Or what do you think, that idea? If we have some kind of representative onsite and though, you know, one of the city halls somewhere in the located?
I think, you know, if, remember, you said they added one site? Well, they, that's in addition to the other 10 call centers that have hundreds of people answering the calls.
No, it's combined together. You know, call center, their response, but at least if we have one representative for a complicated issue like she has, she's not the only one, other people can have it, you know what I'm saying?
So like, and... What we can do traditionally is, if you're talking about participation in a benefit fair, you know, we can come once a year, when the other vendors come, whether it be Aflac or whoever it may come, if you do it on one day with all the vendors that support the employees of the city, you know, we can participate in that and we can show members how to review their benefit. You know, you and every employee of the city has a, you know, a dedicated website where he or she can log on and see their prescription history for themselves as well as all their dependents. And they can see their, what they spent on a copay, you know, going back in their history. And they can also see alternatives that are available to them to help them save money. So yeah, that's what, and, you know, at a benefit fair like that, we could also, we don't like to talk individual specifics due to the personal and IHI of each person's individual experience, but we can follow up, you know, offline at a meeting like that.
See, I use it. You know, thank God, we get their benefits, prescriptions benefits. I enjoy a lot and appreciate for the taxpayer with Jersey City. I got no complaint. I got, so far, over the two and a half years, I got no complaint whatsoever.
Happy you're satisfied.
Yeah, I'm satisfied, you know what I'm saying? Because I know it's a much easier if we go to the local drugstore to get the prescription every time is what we need. But we have to, the other side, we have to look at the taxpayers' dollars, you know what I'm saying? So it's a mail order, it's, you know, it's inconvenience, but we can save taxpayers' dollars. So I got no complaint, really. Thank God we have, you know, prescription drug coverage ourselves. So really appreciate it for that part of it. But complaints like this way, let me put in this scenario. One person gets their full prescription from the doctor, two for the morning and the two was evening. So they sent the old four, the prescription to the mail or fax to your place, but now they're waiting, waiting for, never show up. So one person called your place, listen, I ordered four, two four in the morning, two five after the medication, but still I didn't receive that. If your company answered, they're, listen, because we got three medication we have in the outside, but we went for another one, you know, from the manufacturer, so on, so that's what we hold together, you know, to order to save the shipping cost, so on, so on. I think sometimes when I look at it, it's not for the patient, you know what I'm saying? They have to take a medication for in the morning, you know, but whatever's missing one afternoon is something else. But that's kind of service, how we can improve then.
So our inventory system, you know, and we use Oracle to manage, you know, our...
Whatever's available, they should be shipped the medication to right away, not hold.
Right. So we will package all the medications in a timely manner. Now, if we expect something to come in in 20, you know, 12 to 24 hours, we may hold a shipment. But, you know, after 24 hours, we will not hold a shipment. We will break the prescriptions.
So what you say... If we have to hold more than 12, 24 hours...
We will not hold longer than 12 to 24 hours.
Right?
Well, that is what I've been told, yes.
She, one more time, okay? Because it was one of the complaint for the people. All right? You understand, right?
Last question. So if we, 90-day supply is what you guys usually do, correct?
At our mail pharmacy, yes.
So a patient is on COAGs and the doctor wants to change their COAG to a different COAG. What happens if you've given me 90-day supply, but that month the COAG has changed now? Can we, if we don't open those vials, do we return that and you credit? Or do we have to get another 90-day supply of the second set of COAGs?
It's a new prescription and, you know, you can't really return a prescription. So especially once you take delivery of it. So it would just be a new prescription.
And you charge the three-month supply?
Correct.
Okay, I have no further questions.
Okay, let's bring up Matt.
Yes, I'll get that tomorrow.
Matt, you're up. You're up. You want to do the ordinance first or the resolution?
Yeah, we'll do the ordinance first.
Three F?
I'm gonna just interrupt real quick. I think three E might have been by mistake. Robert, I have the, a new copy signed.
Three G?
No, no. Three E should be probably off the...
Give me that.
Yeah.
That clears up something. What they have is the new and improved version. I needed the old iteration because the machine ate it.
We're talking about D or E?
None of them. F. We're talking about F. It's an ordinance adopting amendments to the Morris Canal redevelopment plan to create an affordable housing provision in the transit-oriented district west, W was west? Zone. I know what TOD was, but...
TOD is Transit Oriented Development, referring to the Light Rail Station in close proximity to this area. So I am back again talking about Morris Canal. There was an amendment request made and you all might have received this map at a previous council caucus. I don't want to hand it out because it's marked in this evidence, just so I can make sure I keep it in file. But there was one on December 3rd, December 8th. And then the person requesting the amendment also held a public meeting as well. And the content of the amendment request...
What was that?
No, this is just, this wasn't, this wasn't a map to be included in the ordinance. This is just for file purposes. But the content of the amendment, excuse me, is a bonus provision for affordable housing on block 19003 to, requiring a developer to dedicate at least three units or 5% of all residential units constructed, whichever is greater, as affordable housing. If the bonus, if that affordable housing requirement is satisfied, the maximum density may be increased to 200 units per acre. may be increased to 200 units per acre. The... Per acre, yes.
Okay, yeah. When you say 5% to 100, so 5%, you're talking about 5% to 125 units while 5% to 200 units?
5% of all the units built in a building, so it's not, it's not necessarily 200 units.
We give them like, let's say, simply say 125 units. If 125 units can be built 200 units per acre, correct? If they provide 5% of affordable housing unit or three more, whatever, right? That's what it is, right?
Yes.
So now, this is my concern. They're talking about increase, I mean, add 5% of affordable housing unit, but we give them power to increase almost 60% to density in that area, 125 to 200. You think it's too much? While we get from them, only we got 5%. What, three units or even more higher, but we can let them increase 60% more units per acre. I think we give away. We should more, tougher. We should ask them affordable housing units at least 10% to order to get 60% total unit increase. You know what I'm saying? And this affordable housing units, not for the low income, we're talking about, you know, 80% AMI. The person we make at least $50,000 some thousand dollars a year. So I think at this one, we are too generous to the developer. I think it's about time to wake up, you know what I'm saying? So what?
And Representative Obama's behalf is here.
Yes. Density is 60%.
It's only three units.
In a 5% or the three units higher, but what I'm saying is that they actually increase 5% the density, I mean, the unit, but we give them, allow to them 60% increase of that. I think I saw, to me, as common sense, but we don't have the common sense at this table. To me, doesn't make any sense at all.
For the right of Robert Verdenell, on behalf of the property owner that asked for the amendment, a couple of things as backup information before I answered the question that you raised. Primarily, the reason for this amendment was to also bring it up to, a similar provision was already passed last year in May for a property in the immediate area. And, but for the fact that my client at the time didn't own the property, we would have been included most likely in that amendment as well. So in essence, we're bringing this to a bonus provision that already has been effectively adopted for the Morris Canal area. So that's sort of the reason why the numbers are what they are, because we're not changing what was already done for Morris Canal, we're just bringing it to our property, which arguably our property should have been included in the bonus provision from when it was adopted in May. The second point is as far as the, the actual numbers, the, the reason, the real incentive is to, in accordance with the policy of the mayor's office, is to put onsite affordable housing, not just a contribution anymore. So the exchange for that, the exchange that's being done really, well, exchange is not exactly the right term, but the incentive, the reason for the bonus incentive is to put onsite affordable housing in new development, and that's why these numbers have already been worked out.
Because you follow the mayor's policy, you know, tax policy, you know, all those policies you follow, so I'm not blaming you, but I'm blaming him as he's a professional, you know, planner at the city of Jersey City, he should bring up the concern and the issue because a bonus package is too good for them to develop for. The meantime, what we get is not there. You know what I'm saying? Because increase a 60% density in that area, traffic, infrastructure issue, all kind of issue we have there, but we only have 5% that maybe three units higher than. I think that's not fair. As, I don't know, maybe you know better, but when I look at it, it's a planner point view, I think it's not fair too.
Okay. Councilperson call.
So the building we're talking about is 135 units?
The site that we're talking about is half an acre, so it'll be 100 units roughly.
So 5% of 100 is five, is that correct?
Correct.
Any other questions regarding to this?
You do your job, but, you know, we are too generous, you know what I'm saying? Without consideration, improve our infrastructure. When you increase density in that area 60%, they get overload our infrastructure, you know what I'm saying? And we only get two, three units or 5%. I think about time to review our whole plan. You know, you know what I'm saying, I'm not blaming you, but you should bring up the issue as a professional planner. Okay, good. I got no further questions yet. Matt, hold Matt. I see your face, Councilman, it's not my fault. I can see.
Were you aware of this ordinance coming?
Aware of is D, and that's because I made a call to Bob Carter myself to speak on behalf of a client in my ward.
So D?
Yes.
D is the overlay.
Yeah.
I don't know about.
Yeah. The overlay is I want to add an address of 237 Randolph Avenue.
The restaurant overlap?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, Matt, we'll do that. So I just want to, Matt, did you, did you reach out to the councilwoman on this ordinance?
I'm gonna defer to Willow.
No, 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 this, when we were in the agenda, folks...
Yeah, I called last week, but I, for one reason or another, we failed to, we failed to get ahold of one another, so, no, I did not, in the last, in the last week, no.
So for...
Look, I'm not really using this as a scapegoat as on this, but I'll just say broadly to planning that...
I thought you were...
Yeah.
So just generally to planning, I would say, if you can, I'll relate this to Director Carter, as, to let him know that, you know, I've alert, when we have the agenda meetings, I alert the planning officials that you should definitely discuss it with your ward council person before this comes as an introduction. Even before it probably comes to the agenda meeting, it's probably best to have a conversation with the ward council person that's impacted by, by the particular zoning changes, because it's not fair to them to have to come into this council meeting and have to answer questions kind of on the fly about some of the proposed changes that they have to take questions from their community from as well. So, okay? Understood?
Just, Councilman, this is, we had met with you, I think, back in December, so it's been a few months, but we had come in and met with you around Thanksgiving.
It wasn't exactly about this, it was about the project itself and you, and my request to you guys was to make sure that Morris Canal was included in these changes and she advised me that she was included in these changes. Yes, that's what she said. So that's the reason that I didn't ask any more questions is because Morris Canal is a big part of the development there and if she's all right, then I'm all right.
Yeah, we had met with them on February 3rd. We also used the restaurant center to identify other stakeholders in the neighborhood that aren't necessarily part of Morris Canal CDC and we discussed it with them as well.
Make sure you be clear on what you met with me about, because I know what you met with me about and it wouldn't be about a percentage, I'd send you somewhere else. You met with me about the project itself and I told you at that time, does it have any affordable housing? And you told me no, remember? Remember that now?
We remember that. No, no. Okay. So Matt, so what I'm saying is that the bonus, it should be not more than base payment, you know what I'm saying? We would wish to have more bonus than the base payment, but, you know, so this plan too.
Matt, 10C.
So that I could...
I thought you wanted him on this one, that's why. But he's up here already, so we've got to finish him. We'll get there. But this is your ward too. And you were just to talk to her about this one too.
Park study area as an area in need of rehabilitation. 10C.
So this is also for Morris Canal or the hopes to be for, eventually for an amendment to Morris Canal. There is an area that is a park and it's on the Rossi list of the, of Jersey City, which is the registered open space inventory. And it is in, it is in disrepair. There is an expo, there's an underground storage tank which is exposed, there is a masonry wall which is deteriorating, there are several trees that are, that need to be uprooted and taken away because they are dying. It was a mansion, that is correct. And...
Where is that?
It's at the intersection of Summit Avenue and Cornellson and...
Is this your ward?
Right up, yes. So this was subject, also subject of the community meetings that I carried out in December as well. I also sent information to Astor Place Neighborhood, Neighborhood Association who, who takes some ownership over this park. And the idea here is to, is a, a study to declare it an area in need of rehabilitation to eventually fold it into the Morris Canal redevelopment plan and hopefully tie it to a project that will, that will improve the park.
Probably a little kid, all right? No, you're a young man. This was a mansion that was on that property and the people over there fought to, they wanted to develop a building or a houses on that property. And the people over there at that time said they were going to take care of this property, they were going to maintain this property, they were going to do everything. What happened? They... Well... Who's there? The people that were there. This is what, yes, Frankie, you should remember.
This is now a set park. It's on the list of parks and it is more of an informal park right now. This is an attempt to try to make it a formal passive park. And I actually was lucky enough to someone to forward that battle to me and read up about it, so.
Matt, I'm not kidding, let me ask this one.
Tried to do that, declare this area Bergen Hill Park Study Area as in need of rehabilitation. Major reason, major reason tried to declare their area as a redevelop area, major reason JC MUA merger to water and sewer infrastructure that deadline in the 50 years. In other words, infrastructure is a bad condition, very bad, because over there, over 50 years old, so that's one of the reason one of declared their area a redevelopment plan area, right? But when I see any documentation, I didn't see any paper from the JCRA, what kind of plans they're gonna have to improve the infrastructure in that area.
Well, that will be part of this plan. It'll be part of, of a project that hopefully comes to build, build in this area.
This is just a park.
Yeah, this will just be a park.
Infrastructure, that's what you mean?
No, there won't really be any improvements onsite because it's a park, but it's, it is one of the criteria that, that allows a municipality designate an area in need of rehabilitation is an existing condition for the area. So that was the criteria that was used by planning to designate it as an area in...
We should be able some kind of plan for how we're going to improve the infrastructure in that area.
This is a, I, I think you're missing the point here.
I agree with you. I agree with you.
You know what I'm saying? You know, that's not regarding this particular...
But we understand, we do not, but I mean, I like to, I wish to have at least some documentation from JCRA. This is, you know, just JCRA already say that this is a major concern to the taxpayer because of city sewer line, water line over 100 years old. And when we talk a redevelopment area and improve the major high-rise building, major concern with the taxpayer and the people who care about the Jersey City, they complain, how about our infrastructure? But I mean, even though we build a major high-rise building, I didn't see any effort from the JC MUA to do some infrastructure improvement, yeah.
I mean, that's not the case downtown, just to be clear. There are oftentimes infrastructure improvements and if we're going to be factual about it, the plans when, when these buildings come in is they retain water, they actually alleviate pressure on the sewer system. It's just a fact. It's just a fact, science.
Science. There you go.
So, no.
So contact JC.
I agree with you. This, this isn't the vehicle for that, but I, I will keep it in mind and bring it back to planning.
Okay. Matt, thank you so much for your time and let's bring up your colleague, Willow Latham. Step on up, Willow. You're the next contestant. Three D, three D as in David.
This is the ordinance amending the zoning map, expanding the restaurant overlay zone.
Three D as in Daddy. As in Diane.
Thank you. Before we even get started, because I've been in contact, I've been in contact with Mr. Carter and he told me that I need to do this here so that you can just add the address that is in the, it's in the area of the map and the overlay, the address just needs to be added. And that address is 237 Randolph Avenue. Okay? All right. Did he talk to you about it already?
He did.
Okay, okay.
Which one are we looking?
D.
D as in Daddy.
No, we're adding another one that's not along the...
So what this here is, is an expansion of the city's restaurant overlay zone. Currently, the parts that exist are along Newark Avenue downtown. What this does is add a few lots downtown, which are mostly existing restaurants or lots that were incorrectly split zoned previously. Half was Ross and half was not, and it's a single lot. There is one on the corner of Newark and McPherson, right at the top of Newark Avenue, that is the Philippine Bread House, which is currently zoned R1 residential, so this is correcting that zoning because that's an existing restaurant. And the main changes you'll note on map one are to add Central Avenue and Palisades Avenue in the Heights. This is the product of a long community discussion with groups in the Heights. It's also been distributed to groups downtown. We've received a lot of positive feedback. We have incorporated some changes based on requests that have come in to either add or take out portions in the Heights. And essentially, we've got a lot of support from the community that this is something that they want to make it easier to have a restaurant business in these zones. They're all commercial strips, either existing or historic, commercial strips that are returning due to the light rail transit there. Yes?
Up at number eight school. And there were a lot of people that were against restaurants in certain areas up there. I mean, you have one group up there that wants restaurants, you know, they have it in everybody's backyard, let's be honest, but a lot of the people did not want this.
Well, we distributed this map to every community group we have listed in the Heights and gotten positive feedback. We did have a number of people, this went through the planning board at their last meeting and we had a number of people come and speak in favor of the Ross. So I, I mean, I can say we've been pretty, pretty strong with our outreach and I haven't gotten back any negative comments. I, I was.
And she was, there were quite a few people that agreed with her.
I don't know who agreed with her. I did, I, I do know the woman you're referring to. She was the person, I heard her issue, as far as I understand it, it was with an existing bar that she's had complaints with for a long time. That is not something that we can really do anything about with the zoning because they already have a liquor license. And, and I... And I believe Ms. McPherson is her name? I, she has added me on Facebook, actually, but I haven't gotten any, so she has my contact information, and I haven't gotten any comments from her.
And Park Association, they're pretty outspoken on this. Then you have people in the neighborhood there that are basically silent, they don't want any associations, and as long as these bars don't go down the side streets into their community areas where there's houses, and this is what they're worried about.
And that's a very legitimate worry. That's why we were very careful to make sure that these stay on main commercial streets. If you can see on the map, the Central Avenue and Palisades Avenue are the main corridors that this follows. There are specifically requested by some community members, places where it extends along Franklin and along Congress, those are actually existing commercial corridors right now.
They had a planning board meeting, right?
Yes.
Okay, a lot of people attended, right?
Yes.
The community supporting is good. Let me ask you.
Oh, yeah, the Councilman.
Yeah, support, yeah, yeah.
So is my address gonna be added in here? That's all right?
Yes.
Franklin Avenue, there, no objection to the people? Have you used that?
Yeah. We've sent it not just to the RNA and the WPA. I've sent it to Heights Hope, the Heights Community Coalition, Nelson Avenue Block Association. I can send you the full list if you'd like, but I, it's... Sure. To be honest, actually, the list is based off of the Resident Response Center's list of community organizations, that they keep it updated, and that's the official policy that we've been directed to follow. But, yeah, I can.
Candace? Okay, guys, I'm having a hard time.
Makes complete sense, it's right there on Montgomery, and so no questions about that. I guess my specific question is, in the piece in the village, has the village actively said that they understand that this is happening on that block? And then the same for Harson's Cove?
So I'm not actually sure, to be honest, who exactly the contact would be. We did send it to all of the neighborhood associations who have borders within this, and the one email I received back was a request for clarification as to the reasons. We provided that, and Ms. Case? I believe it was Van Vorst.
So that was not... Yeah, okay, okay, I'll reach out to them individually.
But it definitely did go out. I'm just talking about the responses I've received. It definitely did go out to them, so...
Could we get the electronic color version of this map?
Oh, yeah. If anyone would like...
I do have a color copy. Okay, I actually, I did email it to you, so...
That was the scatter site.
Okay, okay, yeah, sorry, I will send it.
Okay?
All right, next.
Next item, 10D, as in David, as in Danny, as in Diane.
It's a resolution declaring the scatter site, study area one, as an area in need of redevelopment.
Let's give Willow your attention.
So this is the next step in the process I've been here a couple times about. There are four parcels in the Heights that are vacant. They have the fire department sign vacant by that standard. We did conduct, under the council's authorizing resolution, a study on those four properties. We found that under the local housing and redevelopment law, they did meet the criteria to be declared an area in need of redevelopment. Then that study was presented to the planning board at their last meeting, and the planning board did hear comments from some community members as well as property owners for those properties, but found that the area was indeed, agreed that it met the criteria for an area in need of redevelopment. There are four separate, excuse me, five separate owners for each of them. I'm sorry.
Have they all been contacted?
Yes. It is the recurrence of the law that we have to send them notices each time. No, they have returned. They, a couple of them have actually come to us with concerns. These are property owners who have left these properties literally decaying on the streets for over 13 years, in some cases.
Domain should never be used by this city. It's a disgusting word.
If we don't use the word eminent domain, we legally cannot declare it in need of redevelopment.
Property out of the market, or let the city buy the property?
The city does buy the property.
When it's eminent domain.
That's how city buys property, is through eminent domain?
Something that shouldn't even pop its ugly head up, eminent domain.
Okay, so the way it concerned is that like Rich Bojana, that you can't use all the property owner, right? So they're all where they're, right?
They are.
Okay, good, all right.
We have to send notice twice for each planning board meeting about this. And I would encourage you to look at the photos in this study. These are properties with broken windows, properties that, one, the roof has literally fallen in, and there are, one, the entrance to the basement is falling in on the sidewalk in the middle of Palisades Avenue. Yeah, yeah.
Why didn't we do the citywide?
Oh.
This is, this, the next step would be to add these properties, if the council does agree that this is an area in need of redevelopment, would be to add them into the scatter site redevelopment plan, which is citywide. This is to add more properties into a existing citywide plan.
To ultimately get into that scatter site redevelopment plan, bring it to their attention and...
Uncheck these property and did a study and all that? So did you do it, like, on the west side, Ward C, Ward F, you do the same thing?
That has been done previously. It wasn't me personally, but the planning department, yes, there, all of the properties that are currently in the scatter site redevelopment plan were added through a similar study previously.
Hearing none, thank you. Thank you, Willow. Brian, you are up.
Michael, just have to make sure, all right?
This is just a whole developer.
Okay, Brian, what are you here for, pal? 10W to start with.
10W.
10W is a resolution amending a contract with Hunter Research in connection with the Van Wagen Apple Tree, Apple Tree House. 10W.
How many millions are we up to now on this? It's over $5 million? Robert, Robert, this is a joke. This has gone on for 10 years. Go to the people on Academy Street, they're disgusted. Yeah, but this is over $5 million. You could have built half the Empire State Building once, cost it for one little house. This should have been opened up, and it should have been used for what it was supposed to be used for, what they said five years ago. But what was it, cultural affairs or supposed to be an historic?
It's a historic house museum?
Yes. Fifteen years ago.
Yes, council. The project started in 2004. It's been going on for a long time. We're in the final homestretch. But as you'll see in your packets, the state did send us a letter. It's a designated historic site, and they have stopped the construction of the third phase right now until we have Hunter Research out there to verify any archaeological findings. And that's what triggered this next final step.
Yeah. What did they find? I'm curious.
Probably where they found it, in all the privies.
That's where everything in history is buried, in the wells and the privies. And I went in there five years ago, when they started, I told them, don't touch anything on that damn property until we have people from the area involved there. And evidently, they didn't listen. And I'll bet you half the stuff that was taken up, dug up, has disappeared. You have nothing to do with it. This has been a sore issue for years with all of us in the community there.
Oh, understood, understood. There are several hundred artifacts that are being tagged, and I don't, I can't tell you exactly what they all are yet, but they have them and they will be in the basement of the facility on display or prior to the opening.
Okay, any questions? Go ahead, Councilman Yoon.
I think in 2013, the city of Jersey allocated around, close to around a half million dollars from the UEZ fund, the EOMAP for this project. What happened to the dollar, the money?
Councilman, actually, you're correct. Most of the funding was, for the project, came in grants, okay, from the state and from Historic Trust and UEZ, yes. Well, basically, Phase One, that's the 1.3, and Phase One actually came in at $900,000, so that balance rolled over and was used in Phase Two.
So we're gonna use that fund?
To Phase Two.
Which is completely...
Yeah, so we just make, yeah. Yeah, so we just, they spent already?
Phase Three now. Five million.
All that's left to be done on the site is the...
Broke down, 2013?
But the house is finished.
I didn't see anything because it was all in the interior. Absolutely. We anticipate having the ribbon cutting this summer so we can all be done with it.
A statue of Rich Bojana in the basement.
There might be one there.
Next, what is it?
Okay, your next item.
Z1. Z1 is an amendment, or excuse me, authorizing the border contract to Adams, Reiman, and Hagan Associates in connection with the front and side facade assessment at engine company number four at 468 Ocean Avenue.
What's wrong with engine company number four?
At 468...
468.
Ocean Avenue.
Yeah, what is, what's wrong with that?
Yeah, it's just, over the years, the brick facade is on the verge of being dangerous enough that I felt we had to go to a structural engineer to assess the situation. We just don't know the level of maintenance it needs right now. So we solicited at least three proposals. One did not respond, and I got the two. And I'd like to get them out there as soon as possible so we don't have an emergency situation.
Any questions? No? Okay. Chico?
Thank you for your job you've been doing in Carney Firehouse. Thank you very much.
They're moving in the right direction there.
Thanks.
No problem, no problem at all.
Thank you. We have Director Flanagan. No. So she only has two. As in, Michael?
There you go. Waiting for 10H, Rich.
It's a resolution.
10M is a resolution, amending resolution, authorizing the acceptance of compensation by New Jersey City University for the city's participation in the clinical experiences of NJCU's nursing students.
So this is, several months ago, I came to you with this resolution to go into partnership with NJCU. We told them we didn't want the money, it's like $3,000. They told us we have to take their money because it's part of the grant. And so they sent us a check, and we can't accept their check because we don't, our resolution was not binding to open up an account to accept this money, so...
Trust fund for retirement for Rich Bojana.
It'd be a little bit funny if you have to allow...
10X. X as in the X.
Authorizing a professional services agreement, an annual event to Dr. Solomon Owusu.
Dr. Owusu is our contract doctor in the Child Health Clinic. He's been with the city over 15 years. It's an annual follow-up, and this is the pretty standard going rate that we've been paying him for like the last two years, so... He works about 20 hours a week.
Questions? Sorry to keep you waiting, Director, thank you.
You probably don't have any questions for me, but we're always here. 10E?
Edward. Although we have no Edwards.
10E. Is resolution authorizing the purchasing agent to sell at public auction various auto, excuse me, motor vehicles not needed for public use?
E. We're selling the cars off for the nuts.
Anyone can bid on these cars?
Yes.
So the employees can, too?
Public bid.
Councilor Robshall, there's some cars for bid. Knowing you're a talented mechanic...
So what?
10E. Your talent is mechanic, you might...
Is it conflict of interest?
Not at all.
Nope, it's public bid.
I wanted to plow, too.
Bid on it, make us money.
10F. We have a resolution authorizing the city of Jersey City to accept a gift of a memorial bench from Margaret Mendez for installation at Pershing Field Park. 10F.
And last is 10U.
10U is an opening contract with City Electric to supply and deliver electrical supplies.
So local woman and...
Is it cool?
Yep.
Any questions? Hearing none. Sorry to keep you home. Bob, you're up. Oh, Bob, you have two. I'm sorry, I didn't even, oh, no, you have... The car thing?
Good evening, all. All right, 10O. It's a renewal of a contract with Microsystems NJ for support of the hardware and software that does our tax assessment processing, Tax Assessor's Office, also feeds the tax collection systems in the Tax Collector's Office. 10O.
Hearing none. 10P.
10P, an agreement with Verizon to provide Centrex communication services. This is our yearly encumbering of funds to pay for Centrex. We are slowly retiring Centrex. However, there is a very large number of Centrex lines which are spread out through public safety agencies in the city, and those are difficult to get rid of.
Yeah.
Still, we have a large amount of the, you know, all the... How many places, how many lines do we have?
I think we're down to...
About 250, something like that. I mean, we're just about to retire all the...
I mean, we're just about to retire all the Centrex lines as far as the non-uniform processing for the city is concerned, but the, the public safety agencies have a, a number of them spread throughout firehouses, police precincts, some of them are alarm lines, things of that nature. So, we have to be very careful about how we treat those, because they're important to the public safety forces. But, you know, over my tenure here with the city, we've been gradually bringing all of these charges down. Centrex contract used to be a huge contract, it was, and it's getting smaller and smaller and smaller, and eventually will go away. 10Q is a maintenance support and support contract with Let's Think Wireless. The city's PC networks and telephone networks run over high-speed licensed wireless radio frequencies, and Let's Think Wireless actually maintains the antennas that are on the roofs of the city facilities, which are part of the network. So if we have an antenna go down, or we have a subsystem that is a PC which supports the antennas, that goes down, we call Let's Think Wireless to come out to repair it.
How about the city wireless system?
This company provide wireless system to seal too?
Yeah, there's, there's an antenna on the roof of City Hall, which allows City Hall to talk to all the other city buildings.
King. It's, 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 it's actually a dedicated city machine-only system, and we actually are hard-lined in the building to the wireless antenna.
Yes, correct.
When I moved my iPad, can I use it to your...
It's a different type of wireless. The wireless I'm talking about is licensed frequencies from the FCC. It's basically just point-to-point between city facilities.
But in the answer, no? Answer, no. The answer's no. Still on the top of the medical center buildings? Yes. All right. Somebody asked me last week, you have Journal Square, you have that monstrosity that's been built, and you're going to have a couple more, and I said it's going to knock out communications from the MC. What are we doing about that?
Well, we've actually taken an alternate route.
That building actually isn't blocking our signal. Harts, Harts, Harts Mountain is building a building directly next to One Journal Square Plaza, and that's blocking our signal. So we went through an actual landline in order to keep One Journal Square connected for the period of time that will still be having city offices in it.
Does that affect the rest of the city communications and everything?
It depends, you know, I'm, I'm not quite certain how quickly Police Headquarters is going to move out of One Journal Square to its new location, but my understanding is, is that they're going to have a combination of both leased lines, landlines, and wireless, so they'll always be connected in some fashion.
Next title?
And then 10R is an agreement with Astrotect. What this is, and we, I've been here for this many, many years in a row, city used to run an old mainframe computer system and have, had some legacy computer applications running on that, city's old financial system, city's old tax assessment and tax collection systems, the city's old parking ticket system. There are still city staff who need access to those systems. And so what we did was, we hired a company to run those systems on a mainframe in New York City, because we no longer have a mainframe here in Jersey City that the city owns. So it's, it's a fairly minor cost, it's 24K per year. You know, the budget officer says they still need it, the controller's office say they still need it, so we continued to use it.
The 10R and the 10N. So 10N?
N?
Yeah, N like a Nancy?
Did we meet, did we skip that thought? We didn't start with that.
Yeah, 10, 10N is technically a municipal court resolution, even though I actually wrote the resolution for them. Yeah, this is...
10N is a Nancy court.
The N for the Nancy. This is for municipal court issue, right?
Corporation Training Group for supportive proprietary computer and hardware and software systems. Doesn't indicate in the title for whom it is.
Yeah, but...
Municipal court.
Municipal court. And then now, my question is that, it doesn't matter municipal court or not, we have to be cover their costs, expensive. So now here, the corporate training group also provide legacy parking ticket payment processing. And between 10N and the 10R also property legacy mainframe computer hardware and software system, also city all the, all the parking tickets. What's the difference between N and R?
What 10N is, it's a software, what they did, this particular vendor, CTG, they actually took the data out of the old city mainframe, loaded it onto a PC file server, did some programming so that the folks at the court would be able to generate reports, generate accounting and notices for people who many years ago set up partial payment plans through the municipal court to pay off their old parking tickets. For whatever reason, the court has deemed that they want to continue those arrangements for partial payments. So, one of the tools they have for accounting for this and for having records is 10N, the other one is 10R.
The whole service. When you say legacy parking ticket manager, how long the tickets have to be old to call legacy?
Well, my understanding is that this particular application and the partial payment system agreements it has in it went out of operation in 1996.
So how much, how much, how many dollars are affiliated with the tickets from this 10N?
We'll have to ask the municipal court.
So I'd ask, we look into that before we spend $40,000 on a, something that...
I'm asking you, this one, this issue, we bring up almost every year.
You're right.
You know, every year, probably, you remember, I bring up the concern is that every year, really, we have necessary spend forty-some thousand dollars for maybe 10, 15 years old ticket, maybe balance to have maybe five dollars, you know what I'm saying? So...
Let me just first on 10N. The city taxpayers are not paying for that service. The county parking offense adjudication account is paying for that. It's from the Superior Judge's account, who's paying for that service, not, not city taxpayers.
So why are we approving it?
Well, because, because it's our contract, but the funding source is from the county.
We make sure that, you know, we shouldn't be not, if we can, we should be not, you know.
Yeah, the only other thing I'll say that is 10R for the legacy parking ticket application, it's a very, very small piece of that contract. The rest of it is, most of it is really relating to the city's old financial system. And then 10S is our yearly renewal, let me see. 10S is for non-Centrex Verizon services, most of it data lines, PRIs which help support voice-over IP processing in the city, that sort of thing. What I will tell you about that also, as the IT division and the non-uniform portion of the city tried to move ourselves off of Verizon, public safety still has a very large Verizon presence. So, a lot of the money that is being encumbered under this resolution is to pay for lines that public safety uses. My division is on the cusp of not being, having to use Verizon for any of the services we provide.
See, so this is Verizon data communication, we pay Verizon, right?
Correct.
My concern is that, when I see the bill, we pay, we pay almost more than half a million dollars per year for the Verizon data communication service.
It used to be 800,000.
800,000, that's fine, but we sent, we sent a payment for Telecom Integrity Group, and the other one, 10P, also Verizon Centrex Voice Communication, but we sent, paid the bill to same company, Telecom Integrity Group. What is the Telecom Integrity Group? What kind of companies there?
Well, Telecom Integrity Group was the auditor that we hired to actually...
Put over the calls?
Yes.
To analyze the bills and find savings for the city. And through his help over the last five or six years, we've actually been able to whittle the bills down. It's like, we used to be paying, we used to have a yearly spend on Verizon of over a million dollars, and now we're probably down around 600,000, and it'll probably get lower as, as we go along. So, just to let you know, city went out to bid for a new auditor for telecom billing, and we're just waiting to award a contract to see who that person is going to be.
We're not going to bid without service again, right?
Yeah.
As I said, when we see that auditor they are charging for the bill, if they limited the one telephone line, so we can, City of Jersey save $30, you know, they find out not, some phone line we're not using, so they remove from the bill, so we, City of Jersey, save $30 per line. But what he charge commission, $30 times 12, so he actually commission charged $360, and we pay 10% $360. I think we, they charge for future saving, you know what I'm saying? So, because we make contract per year, I think that's why they calculate charging as a yearly basis. We should be changing, when you put the proposal, we should be changing, we should be pay for same for months, not for the years.
Well, like I said, city went out to bid for these services again. Bids are being reviewed. City will be awarding a new contract, and then that contract will be up before the council for your review. You can decide if the way that contract is structured is appropriate.
So now, what I'm saying is that, when we get their contract, we got nothing to say, but before we come to our side, when we put in the request for proposal, you know what I'm saying, we should be asked that we pay commission based on same for months, not for the years. Are you clear? Okay.
It was written, because those proposals have been submitted and now are being reviewed by a committee.
Okay, so now...
We should be paying for the commission for the future saving, you know what I'm saying?
Understood.
Understood, right? BA, you understand, you're smart. I know that you are very smart, so I'm feel comfortable for the part of it, okay? All right, okay, that's what it is.
10S, we're done? 10T? You have 10T too?
That's, that's a little...
Okay.
Last agenda.
Last week, last agenda.
Yeah. We didn't have our money in place for it.
10T.
Take it from the top, Council President?
Start from the top. What is it, 10T?
All right.
3A, 3A, start it from the top.
3A is a five-year tax exemption for a property at 54 Graham Street.
They're doing, yeah.
3B, also a five-year tax exemption for a property at the address of 628 Summit Avenue.
3C is an ordinance vacating a portion of Marcy Avenue.
No, we didn't do 3C.
No.
Any questions on C?
No.
We did D and F, now we're doing E, adopting amendments to the Land Development Ordinance to prohibit vehicles, automobiles from blocking the sidewalk or extending into the right-of-way.
Okay.
Can I ask one more question?
Sure.
Does that mean that my garage is up here, and if I pull my car up to the garage, but the back end is past my porch, I'm in violation?
If you have a Buick Electra 225, that's 18 feet, nine inches long, you'll get a ticket if you're blocking the sidewalk.
Which one is this?
I wish they did.
He can't, it's, it's six, I think what zoning said, it was six, as long as there's six feet pedestrians to cross, it's fine.
Six foot?
On the sidewalk.
This came last time, we tabled it, right?
Yes, that's what I wondered.
It's a slightly different title, it's the same ordinance.
Yeah, but let me... Last time it was removed from the agenda, it wasn't tabled.
Right, right, yeah.
Live administration, at Councilperson Osborne's request?
No.
No?
No, I wasn't there.
No, I think we brought the tables.
No, to put it back on.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, but let me have a quick question. This one, we just want to make sure, I think this is where actually not just a simple problem, I think there's more problems involved, because there are a lot of buildings being built today, they're setback actually not enough to, to move back. I think they changed somewhere years, I don't know, you know what I'm saying?
It's true.
So now, actually, this is more than enforcement issue. I think a planning department, you looked into setback issue for the new buildings.
I agree with you, Councilman Young.
You know, you know what I'm saying, without that, correct the...
Do a 20-foot setback?
Problem, I think we're going to have a...
It doesn't, I mean, I don't disagree with you that, that those things need to not be allowed, but it doesn't change the fact that, that moms are literally going into the streets with their strollers, I have seen it because...
Yes, yes, so we, we understand, nobody want anybody in this room to, the mom with a baby carriage go to, you know, you know, in the street, we don't want any, anybody putting the dangers, we understand. But also same time, same tokens, my concern is that because of our setback issue have to be addressed with the same time, you know, second is that, another issue, that zoning department has only three peoples working, you know what I'm saying, even though, when I was president of Central Minnesota, when we called them up, they asked help, some enforcement issue, because they have a shortage of manpower, but we already have parking authority, not the park anymore, public safety, public safety under, they have a parking, they have a police officer, the motorcycle, they're all enforced, if we call. So I mean, really necessary to do that, you know? One ticket, if a police or parking to write a ticket, ticket is maybe 60, 70 dollars.
So, police is the, this is the lowest, and they've said it, and they've said it in my public meetings, that this is the, this type of thing is the lowest priority for them, because they have other things going on, and I would argue that a 60-dollar ticket, maybe sometimes if the police don't have a more important thing going on, is not, doesn't have the same teeth that a 100-dollar ticket the first time, and a 500-dollar ticket the second time. The purpose of this is to, literally, that you never do it again. It's kind of like when you park illegally and you get a 40-dollar ticket, eh, you might do it again. When you get a 500-dollar ticket, you don't.
You know, I think we have some mentality, we have that enforcement is answer, yes, enforcement is a very important part of it, but not, it should be overkill, you know what I'm saying? So now, she mentioned to that, I agree with you 100%, so police maybe have other private issue to respond to, but the other hand, we have a parking enforcement units to respond to those kind of issue. So my concern is that, and also not only that, zoning department, after 4 o'clock, they're all gone. They're gone, and the major parking problem is those kind of parkings happen after 5:00 PM. You know, so, I'm, I support 100%, you know what I'm saying? I'm telling you, but I mean, we have already existing laws here in our book, and we put another one...
Can we put this under, just to calm his chest pain, can we put this like under like maybe the mayor's task force, or Doug Calucci can watch this over, because according to him, he says that there's not enough, he says all of that, just to say that we just need, we have a personnel issue in zoning, maybe we can give it to someone, another department who doesn't have a personnel issue.
Zoning wants this, zoning asked for this.
He can ask anything they want, but...
They want it, they get a call.
Let's empower people, if they say that they can handle it, let's empower them.
I'll take the vote Wednesday. Councilman Robshall, and then your councilman.
So, one, I don't care what you says, five, this is for B, C, D, F, and D. This, this is a lot of money right here, 500, 250, that's per day for substantial offense, 500, that's a lot of money. And I totally agree with Michael Young. I had the conversation with Nick Taylor when we were here, and they understand, and now they want to take additional work. They have enough on their plate already. Look, Councilwoman, it's, it's a... work. They have enough on their plate already. Look, councilwoman, it's, it's a great gesture. But at the end of the day, I'm not, I'm not ready for this. No.
Nick Taylor from zoning requested this ordinance.
Why?
Don't think so.
Let him worry about it. Why are we worried about it? He asked for it.
Let's, let's take a vote.
What are you gonna do, what are you gonna do?
Too much money in...
A lot, a lot of these carports were legally, and people parked out and sticking out onto the sidewalk, but they were legally created during the 1980s. Now you're gonna go along and give these people summonses?
Yes, that's what I'm gonna do.
And it's wrong.
So they're gonna continue to do it.
They have a legal driveway, and I have an SUV on it, and it's legal. And my, and I've been, I have that car for four years. So now you're gonna tell me, and I'm parking it, I gotta go sell that car and get a smaller car? Hell no. Come on.
Can the dollar amount of the fine for this ordinance to folks? One at a time, one at a time.
And the, under the public safety and the police officer, their two team go out, write a ticket, as I say. Zoning department, they have three, four peoples working. They're only working to 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM, and the rest of things mostly happen, it's nighttime, whatever, you know what I'm saying? So why, if we get tickets for the, sticking out the kind of sidewalk, if we get the daytime, you get 200, 500-dollar tickets or 250-dollar ticket. If we get ticket at nighttime, you get only six-dollar ticket. I mean, come on. You have to be, some kind of things have to be, make a sense, you know what I'm saying?
To the law department.
I mean, law department, you know, you know, same enforcement.
You mount at least five.
Yeah.
It's the same.
If you wanna look at it, you can take a look at it.
Yes, please. Because, you know, same situation, but fine can be different.
We don't want to.
We don't want. So let's just vote on it. And people on the vote, take a vote.
No, 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 no.
And you all go back to your respective committees. Let's take a vote.
Jeremy, Jeremy, it's not a political thing, it's anything. So, same instant, but same instant.
Okay.
Same instant, but if you come up zoning, they give the 250-dollar ticket. When the police officer or parking authority show, they give the, how much? Sixty, fifty-dollar ticket?
Sixty.
Sixty-dollar ticket. You know what I'm saying? And if you come zoning button working daytime, when they show 250-dollar ticket, but if in nighttime, the parking show, they only give six-dollar ticket. This, we have to have...
Strollers aren't walking at nighttime.
I think we, I think we've heard what it was. We've heard all the arguments. So I just wanna make it clear about law department. The argument's clear.
You know what I'm saying? All right.
The argument's clear. You have one more?
No, I just wanna go, can, can we... I, I just have a quick question to BA and Cooperation Council. Since we in the issue of parking, right? What can we do to have, don't have taxi cab park in the city streets after nine o'clock at night?
When you say park, I mean like...
Literally, driver from Bayonne, they drop their car off in the morning, they take the cab out, and then they bring back their car, park it there, and they go where they like, where they like.
So it, it, it just depends on the zone, but if they don't have the appropriate permit, they're not allowed to park there?
No, after nine o'clock.
After nine o'clock.
So it depends on the zone. So, so then that zone would have to change to a permit zone after hours, which is a pain in the butt for all the residents. But if it's open parking, you can't really say you could park and you can't. Folks, oh, it's, it's, you're talking about the actual taxi cab.
Hold on, hold on. One, one conversation. We've got Councilman Rob Shaw asking, you're talking about the actual working cab.
Cab, yeah.
Oh, well, yeah, we can look at that, a commercial vehicle issue.
And then if there's a legislation...
Yeah. Okay. Robert, Robert has the floor. Folks, Robert has the floor.
I spoke to Councilman Rob Chow. I'm gonna check with Tricia Logan. Commercial vehicles are prohibited from parking on the streets overnight. There are a couple areas in the city where there are exceptions to that.
Bob.
Okay? Off Montgomery Street, Rustano and Choken Court. There's a couple areas where there are exceptions, but commercial vehicles are prohibited from parking on the streets overnight.
Do you know where this area is?
Yes, Marion Section, Mallory Avenue.
I told you the car.
Yeah, so, well, I want to...
The law has maybe already been effect.
Jeremy.
The, I'm, I'm nearly 100% certain.
Years ago, they were... Made exceptions for taxi cabs and allowed to park on the street. Remember Francis?
Yeah, that's right.
We, there was an exception for taxi cabs.
Rustano, Rustano Court and Choken Court off of Montgomery Street.
I thought it was the whole city.
No.
Because people complained about Journal Square and...
Let me just, let me explain why. Because there's a video that they, they, they don't live in Jersey City. They park their cab in Jersey City at night because it's registered on the state of New Jersey, and then they go wherever they live, in Bayonne, wherever, and they bring their car, put it back in the morning, switch side, go work, come back, leave the cab there, and go home. So it's, it's not fair for the city.
Okay, so let's find out where it is, and get the police department to enforce, if there's enforceability, okay? Okay, let's keep moving.
Second reading ordinance is, anyone?
Second readings.
We're pretty light for a change. Second reading ordinance is.
Okay, we're moving on to resolutions.
Ten A is a resolution authorizing an emergency temporary appropriation.
Michael.
B, reappointing Carla Smith to the Red Leveling Board. We go alt, jump to G, authorizing the Office of Emergency Management and Homeland Security to accept a grant from FEMA for the Hazard Mitigation Program. H, I, J, and K, authorize the Business Administrator to execute mortgage discharges at 127 Sherman Place, 484 Tonley Avenue, 141 Bergen Avenue, and 206 York Street. L is annual license agreement with the Jersey City Reservoir, Reservation Alliance, granting permission to use Reservoir Number Three. M through, S were done. We alluded to T. It's a, an agreement with Civil Solutions to perform digital tax map maintenance. V, extension of a contract with U.S. Security Association to, to provide security guard services on a monthly basis, not to exceed three months. Jump to Y, amending and reauthorizing, both Y and Z are resolutions amending and reauthorizing agreements with attorneys. Y is Light, DePalma and Greenberg to serve as special counsel in commercial litigation, and O'Donnell McCord to serve as special counsel to represent the city in tax appeals. Z one was earlier. Councilperson's.
Can we, can we have like a, I don't know, can we use special session or something to get an update on the power authority? Thank you.
Z two, professional service agreement to attorneys at law to serve as public defenders. And Z three is to award a professional services agreement to Andrew Abrams to oversee the, and be the chief public defender in municipal court. Z four, an agreement with Jersey City, I mean with Usable Life Insurance Company to provide life insurance for non-management employees. Z five, amending a professional services agreement with Charles Montang to represent the city in the Sixth Street embankment matter.
Can I ask how much we're up to now wasting tax payments?
Right on a resolution, sir.
Yeah, I know. 430,000, we're above.
I wish.
Z one?
Z six, applauding the 200, 2016 St. Patrick's Day parade honorings. At the beginning of the meeting, we distributed a resolution recognizing March 7th through 11th as Boys and Girls Club Month.
Week.
Week.
Week, sorry. Did I write some right here?
I don't know, week.
No, I wrote no. Okay, wait, wait, wait. Who made the motion?
County.
Who?
Coleman.
Councilperson Coleman, seconded by Danny Rivera. So we turn at 7:16.
What do you think of rational things, basically?
No.
Okay, we are out of here. Thank you, everyone.